Good evening, everybody. It's a Rockport Select Board meeting, Tuesday, May 28th, at 7:00 in the evening. Hope everybody had a nice Memorial Day weekend and enjoyed the parade. It was a nice parade, as always. To start off with, we don't have any public hearings at all. We have some minutes which we just got. Does the Board want to consider those, or do we want to wait till a subsequent meeting to look at those?
I think we need... I would like a subsequent meeting so we can review them.
Okay. So we'll hold those and put them on a subsequent meeting's agenda. The next scheduled Select Board meeting is actually the organizational meeting of the new Select Board on Wednesday, June 12th, at the conclusion of the annual town meeting on the main stage upstairs here at the Rockport Opera House. There likely will be one more meeting of this Select Board sometime in early June that has not yet been scheduled. Upcoming Select Board workshops, tomorrow night. Workshop on future development of the RES site. That starts at 6:00 PM and is upstairs, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
So for all those who are interested in the Rockport Elementary site and what might happen with that, this is an opportunity for you to get in there and join the conversation and express your opinions. The annual town meeting will begin on Tuesday, June 11th, at 8:00 in the morning with voting at the town office. That will then adjourn at 8:00 PM, resuming on Wednesday, June 12th, at 7:00 PM at the Rockport Opera House upstairs for the open portion of the meeting to act on all remaining articles. We urge everybody to vote on Tuesday, June 11th, and to plan to attend the town meeting on Wednesday evening, the 12th. The town office will be closed this Thursday from 11:00 to 12:30 for employee wellness training. So if you have business at the town office, try to avoid those particular hours. Agenda changes. What I'd like to do with this agenda basically is work a little backwards because of who's here. I would like to do the wastewater commissioners right after the consent agenda, because Megan is here to present the initial presentation of the wastewater budget, and then move on to new business for the folks who are here for that. And it's only two items under new business, and then after that, proceed with unfinished business. Is that set all right with everybody here on the...
I'd like to, before you get going on that, Mr. Chair, address item G, to which I believe there might be somebody here that might want to have a public comment.
I haven't got there yet. I was doing agenda changes first. That's next. So is everybody okay with the agenda changes that I suggested?
Well, I don't see it on...
Yes.
Sounds okay to me.
Okay. Now, on to public comment. Public comment should be directed at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. A comment from the public will be welcome. Prior to each agenda item, further comment will be granted only by permission from the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Does anybody wish to make public comment this evening?
Another wonderful spring evening.
Did you identify yourself with the folks at home?
My name is Richard Remsen. I'm a chairman of the Ordnance Review Committee, and previously I was the Rockports representative for the Gateway One. And I've been in touch with some of the people that were involved in Gateway One. In conversations with the MDOT and the number of accidents that have been on Route 90 and 17 over the years, in fact, this spring, a truck took down all of the lights at that intersection. So it's been a difficult intersection and one where there's been tremendous number of accidents over time. So the suggestion is if the selectmen have an interest in encouraging the MDOT to review the possibility of a rotary or a roundabout in West Rockport, be a way of getting rid of the traffic lights. There's often a lot of traffic there, and if it could keep moving, I think it would help with the traffic flow. So I don't think it costs the town anything except a letter from the Select Board with an interest in having the state review what may be possible. And at the same time, it's something that could happen in West Rockport instead of in the Coastal Village.
I think this is a great idea, and I would like to see this put on our next meeting's agenda, just again to simply request that the town ask that the state do a study and let Richard sort of help with the guidance.
Do... Would we have to consume future meeting time with that, or could we just...
Well, it's not on the agenda, so you'd have to...
Yeah, we'd have to add it.
People would have to be aware of it to comment on it.
I know in the past, I think there has been a decision that there wasn't enough space out there. It's addressed in the email here, and I don't know where that stands or when that last analysis was done.
Well, I put a map of the... That's the tax map of West Rockport, and you can see there's a lot of property that is really owned by the state.
Right. And as it says, that said, there is no definitive analysis that they could find, so...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to do it tonight if people think that's the correct...
Doesn't it have to be on an agenda item? It's better if it's on the agenda, and I think having it out here in the public comment time allows folks out in town to hear that we're considering it, and I think the next action would be just to, as you say, request, you know, request some more information or put together a communication from the Select Board to ask the state to explore the possibility and see what the options are.
Yeah, and there may be no possibility because of the constraints on the property, but with so many traffic lights disappearing almost on a yearly basis as trucks roll by, I think it's...
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
It's proven to work in other parts of the mid-coast as well as down east, so I mean...
Sure. Well, the intersections work. There's no question about that. I think the only question in my mind is the space availability and would it... I'm sure there are requirements as far as radius of curvature and stuff like that that are involved. We just would have to find out if it would fit, so...
The new roundabouts are often tapered, so emergency vehicles can ride up on that taper, and the circles generally are smaller. And with the new fire station potentially being rehabbed, I think it'd be good to look at that intersection.
Yeah, maybe that could be done in conjunction with that if the town can create a little more room there to accommodate it. So I think, yeah, let's put it on a future agenda.
Future meaning June, are you...
We'll see. We probably will have another meeting in early June. If it doesn't go on then, then the new Select Board will have their first meeting in late June. So the very latest it would be on the late... That's up to the new Board to put it on in late June if they would like to.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Richard. Thank you. Is anybody else...
One quick question. Would it be appropriate to ask Richard to... He's been doing the background work here, to just draft the appropriate letter and submit it to us for review, and if we're okay, sign off on it, rather than...
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. I mean...
Would that be okay with the rest of the Board?
Something that ultimately has to be signed by the Select Board.
Oh, yeah. No, no, we would. But if you want to write the letter, we'll look it over and sign it.
Well, actually, what you could do is write a letter to Dear Select Board, then we could just attach that letter to our submission or whatever. I think that might be a good way to do it and have the pictures in there, too, so...
Yeah. All right. Great.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to make public comment at this point? If not, let's move on to the Town Manager's Update. We don't have a full Town Manager's Report because it's our second meeting of the month, so...
Sorry. Could we... And I know this is part of changing things around, but I don't know how long that's going to take, but...
I'm going to try and be very brief. The rest is up to you. As you know, there was an accident on the Rockville... At the Rockville Cemetery that took out the fence and wall. Unfortunately, it was right before Memorial Day. Public Works... Police were called. They've gotten all the information. Public Works was called. They did a cleanup, so it would look half-decent before Memorial Day. They did keep track of their time, so we can submit that. The insurance claims will be submitted to the... To our insurance carrier, and our insurance carrier will then go after the person that had the accident. One of the things that's come up is we'll need to close the office on July 1st until noon for the end-of-the-year closeout. We've been normally... We've been doing that on the 30th, but the...
We'll also have to close the Friday floor for now for us to close.
For close... To get closed out. So normally, we do that, but we all... We have an event going on in the harbor, so we can't really close out because the event is going to happen on the 30th. So we need to...
If I close out the year, they can't process any cash or credit card transactions down there.
Right.
What's the event?
It's the sail into summer. The concert series starts then with the Malat Brothers.
So we're going to get... We'll get transactions from that.
Yep. The foundation is holding a groundbreaking on Friday, the 7th, at 4:00 PM with the reception for the library with the reception following at the former CMCA building. I don't know, does he have a new name for that building yet?
I don't... I don't think so.
It'd be nice to call it something other than the former CMCA.
They endorse this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We received the bond proceeds. The bond has all been approved, so Megan has that money in hand. The sewer inspections are going pretty well, but this is the easy part of the inspections. We have... We've scheduled 560 inspections out of the 671. We're scheduled to send the third notice out here very soon, I would imagine, that will let people know that they've got to get their inspections done. So far, we've inspected 99 homes and found only one obvious violation, but several floor drains are suspect, so we have to go back into dye testing, so we'll have a crew doing that. The water at the West Rockport Fire Station for the watering out front has been fixed, and we had a rather large attic accident at the intersection in front of the Market Basket on Route 1 the other day that closed traffic and involved several cars, four ambulances, and...
State of Maine cheese, yeah, further down.
Oh, further down. Oh, State of Maine cheese, yep.
State of Maine cheese.
Yeah, that's right. Yep. And officers from Camden came to assist. I thought it would be an opportunity to just kind of remind people, I guess, one of the major problems was, you know, people on the road trying to get by the intersection. They put our first responders in danger when they're trying to do that. They're trying to drive in the breakdown lane. And when there's an event like that, the first responders are responding to the event and to the emergency of taking care of people. And when they have unruly people in cars trying to, you know, drive down the break-on lane through parking lots, it makes it very difficult and dangerous for them to do their work. So, you know, Camden came in and helped with traffic, some additional traffic control, but even having firefighters go out there, people just ignore the firefighters. They'll ignore the police until they get out that ticket book and start writing tickets.
I was just going to say, were any citations given?
Yeah, it's just a matter of they, you know, they're dealing with so much going on at that... I don't know how many... What did Jason say, how many accidents?
Four. They had four ambulances.
Ambulances there, but I don't know how many cars it was.
To Doug's point, were any citations issued?
Not to my knowledge. I don't know. I can check. So that's my report, my update.
See, there again, that's one of those things, if there is a citation issued according to your fire chief, then they can go after restitution for our expenses for them being there.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. Rick, we have... The request is in to develop a transition document from yourself. How's that coming?
I haven't had a chance to start on it. I hope to start on it in the next week or so to work on that. I haven't frankly had time yet, so...
Anything else for the manager? Okay. Consent agenda, we have one item on that, a committee resignation from Rachel McCorma for the Recreation Committee.
Make a motion to... Oh, we don't need to, do we?
We have to have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. And any discussion on that motion? And I assume that we'll send the usual letter of thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Please. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay, let's jump now to wastewater commissioners, so we need a motion to enter as wastewater commissioners. So moved.
Would it be okay to approve the two committee members, only because we have one here?
I was going to do that. That was going to be next, okay, after this, because Megan's here, so that's what we had agreed to do, so... All in favor of going in as wastewater commissioners?
Well, I didn't... I asked if there was a second. I had...
I thought you were...
I made the motion, and I said, is there a second?
Okay, yeah, we got a second. Okay, all in favor? Yes, okay. And we have received the wastewater budget, and I've asked Megan here just to give a quick overview. There's no expectation that we will approve this budget tonight, but just to get the quick overview of it, and then we will have it on our agenda to approve in our meeting in early June, whenever that comes along. So Megan, the floor is yours.
All right, just as a quick note, I gave you a new printed one tonight because I got a request from Woodard and Kern to add something to the capital improvement plan, so I made those adjustments and printed you a new one. So in the administration budget, most of the changes were derived from changes that were made in the general fund budget. So those equate to adding one of our Public Works employees, a percentage of that salary to help with certain wastewater things should somebody be out sick or odd end tasks that we have with that. We added 10% of the McHed contract, which covers Bill's time that he allocates to wastewater. That was a general fund budget change. Some additional clerical time for my assistant to work on the II study as well as other wastewater tasks such as the liens, discharges, and keeping track of that. We also have an intern to reimburse the general fund to help with the II study. They will be starting in June and will work alongside one of the Public Works employees to do those basement inspections. The insurance I increased because if the bond passes for the new sewer extension, we'll be adding more pumps to that insurance, and we will add them as soon as they are in the ground, so we needed to cover those costs. Postage I increased for the II study mailings. We'll be sending out confirmation letters as well as violation letters to all the homes that we do the inspections for. Right now, that money is, for now, is coming out of the general fund. If we can move it June 30th to the wastewater budget, we will do that. For the operations budget, the Woodard and Kern contract, there were some changes made to that. The biggest change is that they're requesting additional person. We are adding more pump stations if the extension passes. There's OSHA requirements as well as safety needs and needs of a growing system. Right now, we only have one person that operates the entire system, so if we... If it went down or he needed to go on vacation, we don't have any backup for that, as well as he is currently going into manholes and stuff by himself, which is an OSHA violation as well as a safety issue. So it is important that we have two people that are dedicated to those services. The Camden and Rockland Treatment Plant increases are estimated. Those were based on what they're expecting. Their percentages are going to go up as well as estimating our usage out a little bit, so that's where those figures came from. The capital maintenance for above-ground, there were some slight changes there, which we'll go through when I get to the capital improvement plan. The debt and capital maintenance budget, I added the proposed payment for the 4.5 million-dollar bond issue. This is offset with revenue from the TIF, so there was no impact to the debt service fees for that. The below-ground capital maintenance was actually decreased, but we tried to do level funding for our capital with wastewater, so I'll go through that when we get to the capital budget, which is now. So the above items that we plan on doing this year are in that first blue column, which is on page 21. We are adding a new SCADA and control panel at the country end pump station. We have some health and safety compliances that we have to comply with every year, and we're estimating that to be at $4,000. We have miscellaneous money in there for control panels, electrical switches that we might need to be replaced. SCADA services, we have that in there, which is them reviewing the pipes and stuff in the ground. We need to purchase a new pump for the C Street Pump Station. The one I added today is the TeleDesign radio. All the pump stations are equipped with a phone system that if it goes out or its backtop, it automatically sends a message to Andy, the guy that takes care of our system. The company that we currently use is going out of business, and any new company that we go to will not support the equipment that we already have on our pumps, so we all have to purchase all new pumps and the system to go along with that. So that's what that increase was for today. We are adding to the treatment plant update reserve, which is for currently the Camden Treatment Plant, but we know the Rockland Treatment Plant is going to need upgrades too, so this is to work our way towards making those bond payments. And then we're going to start a vehicle reserve instead of having it come out all at once, so we added that $10,000 in there to try to keep the budget level. For below-ground work, we added $20,000 to camera, jet and camera, the gravity-fed sewer line from the village and Glen Cove. We increased to $25,000 for repairing place areas targeted for the improvement of the analysis of the camera surveys, so this is if we have to replace any pipes or anything like that. And then do an inspection of our manholes and structures, so that's what that $15,000 is. And then the contingency is to help offset any unexpected costs that we have, which if we had a big pipe burst or something, $10,000 probably wouldn't even come close to covering it. Debt service fees, these are listed on page 24. It's expected to increase from $53 a quarter to $61.79 per quarter. The annual amount increased from $213 a year to $247 a year. On that same page, is the usage fees broken out. It increased... It's estimated to increase from $11.91 per cubic foot to $13.50 per cubic foot. A lot of this has to do with the increase Woodard and Kern contract, as well as increases in wages and benefits and the increase in the amount that we're sending to Camden and Rockland Treatment Plants. I based it on what our current usage is, assuming that it's going to take some time for people to have violations to fix their problems and get a contractor in to fix those problems. So I was worried about underestimating those. I don't think they're overestimated, but I was worried about underestimating them too much, hoping that people would fix any violations they had in time. So the year-over-year adjustments, single per user, the current fiscal year, the usage is estimated at $83.37. The debt service fee is $53 for a total per quarter of $136.37, or $34.10 a month. With this budget as it's proposed, the usage will go to $94.50 a quarter. The debt service will be $61.79 a quarter for a total of $156.29, or $39.07 a month, which equates to an increase of $19.92 per quarter, or $4.98 a month per user. So that's the high points of the wastewater budget.
You know, I tried following you as you went along with it, but so in a nutshell, though, where's the bulk of that 30% increase?
Between wages and benefits for what we did in the general fund and the increase in the Woodard and Kern contract for the additional person.
The additional person of Woodard and Kern. So it's really all personnel?
Right.
Okay.
And on the plus side, I guess, number 21, number 25, that increase is based on the flow that we currently send?
This is based on what we are estimating our portion of the Camden bond will be at this point, and that estimate is based on our current usage to Camden.
What timeframe do you know of that they will be submitting their bond for approval based on the current numbers they have?
I think they've already sent it to voters for approval, and they've already received approval. They're just waiting to a point that they feel comfortable actually drawing the bond and moving forward with the project.
So even if we find irregularities with our I&amp;I, the numbers that they currently have, even if we find problems, it can't get adjusted down in our favor?
It can if they... If they're a year or more from...
I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what's our timeframe to find our problems?
They haven't told us when they plan on drawing the trigger on the bond and actually moving forward with the project.
So I think the answer to the question is if we find issues, then solve them this summer, that that's going to help us in that regard, I think.
That's our goal, is to get it done for the summer.
Good.
When's the last time we asked them, Camden? When they were planning on doing it?
I talked to them last when they did the bond issue. I think it was last November, and at that time, they didn't know. I can certainly reach out to them and see.
I've heard some things more recently from one of their Select Board people, so I think you should reach out.
You will.
And Megan and I had a conversation last week about the usage fees and things like that, and you want to comment on that, Megan, that if we find the I&amp;I issues and solve them, that we think that the user fees may be able to at least hold level for the subsequent fiscal year?
I think that we'll actually be able to decrease them because the amount that we're sending to Camden and to Rockland, Camden increased by 22%, and Rockland increased by 15%, so even if we can move that back some based on what we found, we're hoping Woodard and Kern told us that we would be lucky if we found nine million gallons of infiltration going into the system. So that will knock about $80,000 out of our budget, which will then will be able to reduce the usage fee.
But we also, part of this work that Molly has been doing, discovered how many... How many people are we not doing collecting debt service fee on?
There's 20-something people that Main Water never added to the debt service, and because they're not getting... And we had some people that have connected to the system and aren't being billed for usage.
One other question, I guess. Have we undertaken any type of query with Rockland to see if there's any similar spikes on rain days? I mean...
The 18 million gallons was across the whole system.
Well, I thought that was the accessory we were doing to Camden.
No, it was across the whole system.
They looked at all of the pump stations.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Well, as I say, this is an introduction for us and it gives the Board the chance to look at this over in more detail and have some questions when we see it again for approval, which I think will be sometime in early June.
Can you send us your PowerPoint?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, if there's nothing else under wastewater commissioners, then...
Then we exit.
Second.
Hope.
Okay, so moved in second that we exit as wastewater commissioners and return as Select Board. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a five, so I'm going to go. Okay, now we're going to jump to new business, and we have two committee applications here for the Recreation Committee this evening to join that, Brian Fitzpatrick and Chris Christie. And one up. I know I had a note that Brian could not make it, so...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chris Christie?
Short 30-second introduction of why you want to be on the Recreation Committee.
Sure. Excuse me. Longtime mid-coast resident, 15-plus year or so Rockport resident, certainly a user of all the fields when I... Certainly a user of all the fields when I was just a tot. And now I've raised a son using all the fields and we, uh, because my work has settled down and I'm not traveling nearly as much as I was and I'm back in the, in the community on a more full-time basis, that now it's time to maybe pay it forward and give back a little bit.
Does anybody have any questions for Chris?
Just one comment. Uh, I watched Chris in action at Rec Committee meeting the other day as both he and, uh, and our other candidate had attended and they'll both be excellent additions to the committee.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask Jeff, I guess, since Brian's not here, do we wanna, um...
This is the exciting part.
Yeah, we had to talk.
Do we wanna, uh, consider that one as well?
I indicated on the thing I was not...
I would move that we approve Brian Fitzpatrick and Chris Christie as, uh, members of the Rec Committee.
Second.
We have a term expiration there.
Yep. With terms to expire June 30th of 2021.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? No, they look like they'd both be great members.
No, yeah.
All in favor?
Boom.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for volunteering to serve. Uh, next item here, a request from, uh, Legacy Rockport, uh, to have approval to put on the bridge dinner. And, uh, we have Maggie here who is, uh, on Legacy Rockport's board and has been heading up the, uh, effort to run the bridge dinner. And so if we, we have some information that she provided, uh, if we have any questions of her, uh, we can certainly ask those at this point. Maggie, you wanna come up and give a quick, give a quick overview just to...
Who are you, Maggie?
I am Maggie Timmerman. So, yeah, our plan is to hold the, um, Legacy Dinner on the Goose River Bridge on August 11th with a rain date of August 18. We'll be able to accommodate somewhere between 250 and 300 attendees. The last time we did this three years ago, Linda, uh, we had 256, but we definitely identified some additional space. So we'd like to accommodate more folks if possible. It's going to be a, uh, a family-style, uh, meal on the bridge with a cash bar. And, yeah, I think that's, that's kind of the summary.
So the, the 20-second question would be, what steps were done last time to seek permission from the state as it is a state aid road? And what steps are being taken now?
Um, I am not aware of what steps were taken last time.
Can we get permission from the state to do that?
Unlikely. We, what we, we did last year, what we did last year was, uh...
I don't wanna know. Too much information.
In that case, I'd move that, uh, we approve the request of Legacy Rockport to hold a bridge dinner on Sunday, August 11th with a rain date of August 18.
I second.
Okay, we have the motion in a second and I would add that, that the, uh, Legacy Rockport is calling it the Legacy Dinner on the Goose River Bridge. And that's, I think that's kinda nice 'cause it establishes a tradition that may hap- maybe not every year, but every, every, every so often, I think. Uh, it's kinda nice.
And I should've mentioned too, it is a fundraiser, so that we're hoping between sponsorships and ticket sales that there, I think we've got five, um, entities that we'd like to help fund, including the library, Rockport Chapel, uh, Rockville Chapel, Simonton Corner, the archives, and the Lime Kiln Restoration Project.
So in view of not having knowledge about proper approval from the state, are we appropriately or will we be appropriately covered insurance-wise for any mishaps?
Yeah, we just, yes.
I, you know, I'm still not... I understand it's a good cause, but...
They have had meetings with the depart- with the police chief, the fire chief, the public works director, um, and so all, all those issues have been addressed.
Yep.
Well, when we can't get a stop sign on Pascal Avenue because the state won't let us do it, I, I think, you know, just my two cents worth.
We have a motion in front of us. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? We need to call the roll on that one. Uh, Mr. Kelly?
No, for a reason stated.
Mr. Hamilton?
Approve.
Ms. Hall?
Approve.
Dr. Cole?
Approve.
And Mr. McKinley says yes. So that's a four-to-one vote.
I know.
It's just, it's the idea of circumventing.
Okay, thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we will circle back to unfinished business. If I don't forget something on this agenda this evening, it'll be a miracle. Uh, first item under unfinished business is consideration of professional services agreement with Real Term Energy for the conversion of streetlights to LED. And I believe we have somebody here from that organization?
Mark here from Real Term.
And the contract.
And the finalized contract that, that our council and their council or their contract person worked out the details. There was just one remaining insurance-type i- issue. You'll see in the, uh, the edited version or the, uh, track change version.
You don't need insurance.
It's I- item 12 and they worked out wording that, that our council was happy with.
So that's been, um...
That's been all worked.
Adjusted appropriately?
Yep. It was, uh, according to Phil, um, our attorney, it was, it was mostly that the, uh, Real Term didn't understand what he was trying to say about the, uh, about the, uh, general liability, the, the policy and the Tort Claims Act and all of that. So they've worked that all out.
Okay.
I'd move to approve the professional service agreement between the town of Rockport, Maine and the Real Term Energies, USIP, for conversion of public street lighting to LED streetlights. I think that should be LP, isn't it? I just read it as written.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the contract. I think it's LP.
Yeah, right.
Second.
LP, yes, correct.
So we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, do we wanna ask, uh, Mr. Carter to tell us the 15,000-foot view of what will happen once we, and the, and the chronology of events?
Yeah. Uh, thank you again, Mark Carter, Real Term Energy, resident of the great state, you know, great town of Powell, Maine. So glad to be up here. Regarding the typical process once a contract is signed, so the, the first step is a GIS audit. So we send our auditors, uh, to the towns and we actually collect information on each of the poles that have streetlights. And that's important because there's a lot of information we need, uh, farther down the road for photometric design. So some towns do have some auditing or, or some GIS data, but there's a lot of stuff that we collect that they don't normally collect, like fixture height, mast arm length, road width, road classification. So, uh, so that's step one. And we have our own auditor that's actually resides in Yarmouth, Maine, so within the state and, uh, is close by. And they typically collect about 100, 120, uh, points per day. So it shouldn't be a terribly long audit, uh, not more than, than a couple days to collect all that information. So, uh, once that information's collected, we, uh, start working with CMP for reconciliation and we'll work with the town as well to make sure that, you know, there, there's no, you know, usually get 90, 95%, and then you wanna try to, you know, there's some fixtures that, is that a, is that a town-owned fixture? Is that a residential light? Or in some cases, it could be a state or DOT-owned light. So we'll look at the ownership. And then, uh, once we get through that, then we go into a photometric design. So they'll actually look at designing the right wattage and distribution light for, uh, each of your streets. So they'll, they'll do unique streets and, and do a photometric design. So, uh, should it be a type 2, type 3, a 19 watt, 31 watt? So we'll actually go through that entire process. And then we'll engage with the municipality at that point or before we start the design in case there's anything, uh, that's gonna change within the town that might influence how you want the lighting. So if you know you're gonna build a new business park, you may not wanna put up one type of light where you know you're gonna have to change it two years down the road. Uh, we also take input. Uh, there are some municipalities that wanna take this opportunity to potentially add lights or remove lights, um, such as in Falmouth, they wanted to add lights for all their, uh, dry wells. So when the fire department was filling up their, their tankers, they wanted to have a little extra security to have some, some light there. So things such as that, high, high accident areas or, uh, or if there are some lights or some residents that want lights taken out and the municipalities find with that, uh, we can do that as well.
But we'll be, they'll be able to look at that when they see the whole design. You know, everything will be plotted on a, on a GIS map and...
Correct. Yeah, we use Esri ArcView as the base map and then we can provide that to you as a shape file or also in a KMD for Google Earth, uh, view, uh, to look at that as well, so.
And what would the timeframe be on completing that work?
Uh, so typically, uh, once the contract's signed, we could probably have an auditor, probably one to two weeks. It depends, uh, looking at the schedules from, I was in, uh, Rockland earlier today. So, uh, they're meeting next Monday and I think they, they plan to sign theirs June 10th, Monday the 10th. And I think the last one would be Thomaston would be, uh, I think their council meeting's next Thursday at 6:00, if I'm not mistaken. So within the next two weeks, I should have all five municipalities signed. So we'll probably come and do the audit of, uh, all the, uh, all the group of towns.
All together?
Uh, together, yes. Yep. So that should be done in a couple weeks. Then you have to do the reconciliation. Uh, that can take a few weeks depending on how many, uh, unknown lights there are in regards to ownership status. And then, uh, the photometric design, um, I would suspect it's probably gonna take, uh, three to four weeks, uh, for the group, um, you know, for, uh, for that amount of light. So, uh, probably by the end of the summer, you'll get to the investment-grade audit. Uh, and then once that's presented to the council and, and approved, uh, then we do procurement. And that's typically takes about, you know, four to six weeks on delivery of the fixtures and then we go straight to installation. So, uh, if I had to guess, I mean, it's, it's probably gonna be like a, I'm gonna think of early fall, like a September, uh, maybe an October-type installation.
Okay.
If an individual citizen was interested in what sort of fixture and temperature and everything was gonna go outside their house, where would that opportunity be or would there be an opportunity?
Uh, there would be an opportunity. So we don't, we don't do the fixture selection or we do that in parallel. So we can start the, uh, audit, uh, and then we can bring in fixtures of different color temperatures and different manufacturers. In fact, that's one of the things I'm doing next week. I'm bringing five different manufacturer fixtures to, to Rockland on the, on the third, uh, at their meeting to kinda show, to kinda narrow that down. Generally speaking, the International Dark Skies Association, um, you know, recommends a color temperature of 3,000 or less. So really the only color temperatures in that range are 2,700 and 3,000, uh, which is predominantly every, every town and city in the state of Maine has, has gone 3,000 or less.
Residential.
Uh, for, yeah, residential, uh, with, I think only two exceptions. I think Lewis and Auburn went 4,000. But, uh, other than that, every other municipality has gone with 3,000 or 2,700 or a combination thereof. Some do a hybrid approach where they may do 3,000 downtown and then they'll do 2,700, uh, a little bit warmer in the residential neighborhoods. Dover, Foxcroft and Wells, both, uh, both the debt.
I thought that the last time you were here, we were talking about putting up some fixtures, some sample fixtures so that residents could and we could take a look at what they look like installed.
Yeah, certainly. So that's, that's still capable as we're going through that selection process. Um, I would recommend to try to get it down to maybe two so I could bring some fixtures in and you could, you could look at the different styles, designs, and then we could put some up. It, it might make it easier to, on the selection process, but we can certainly put some, some, uh, pilot fixtures up so they can see the, you know, how they look, uh, the different types of LEDs, so.
When is that selection process in there?
Uh, well, that's gonna, that'll be concurrent with the GIS audit, uh, as well as the reconciliation.
Okay.
So you, yeah, you only have to make that decision before you go to photometric design because, uh, the actual pattern of the light on the, is slightly different for each type of fixture. The, so, uh, you need to have that selected before you can actually do the photometric design.
Are your other towns as far ahead as we are with locations? I mean, we've done a pretty extensive, uh, search and, uh, analysis of where ours are now. And I think they're already mapped on...
Right on. We already have them mapped, but as Mark was saying, though, we don't have the arm length and we, we at least have a base map with the locations.
Information that we have as to where they are would be a big bonus.
Yeah, we can, we can take that out and read that into the map. So we could just collect all the supplemental information that, uh, isn't already available. So if you already have the pole height, you already have the pole construction material, you know, the lap.
We don't have that.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. We can, we, we can take that in, so.
What's the closest town that one could drive to, to see an LED-lit town from Rockport?
For a complete, uh, let's see, we just finished Freeport last week. Was it an hour and a half? Um, I'm trying to think. Dover-Foxcroft's probably farther, isn't it?
Yeah, that would be. Probably.
Good ride, though.
Freeport.
Going, going the other direction. You know, we, we did a complete, uh, uh, replacement in the Town of Mount Desert, but that's, that's gonna be farther as well.
But Freeport's a good one 'cause folks, folks can go there.
Yeah.
Is it the whole town in Freeport that was converted?
The entire town.
Okay. So, so any streetlight in Freeport right now is an LED light?
Any, any, yes, yes. Um, and then just beyond there, there's, there's quite a number or string of, of different municipalities. Include, uh, Falmouth's converted, South Portland's converted, Portland, Scarborough, um, and, uh, there are different...
If you're coming back from Portland any evening or anything, you could check it out.
Get off the road and drive to Freeport.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, do we have any further questions of Mr. Carter? Okay, we have the motion in front of us. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? A five to nothing vote.
Thank you.
That's a great leap forward in the street, the streetlight.
Yeah, absolutely.
You've been pushing for that for a long time. Okay, uh, next item is, uh, discussion of the charge of Rockport Library Building Committee. We have, uh, a document in the packet that, uh, is a draft document to be sure, but Deborah worked on this and then, and then sent it to me for some input. Um, and so what you see in front of you is a collaborative effort, I guess, between Deborah and myself. Uh, and I think it's pretty close to where we need to be. Um, Deborah, do you wanna introduce this in your thought on how you went through this?
Sure. First off, there's a, um, on the third line, there's an interior that I would suggest that we take out. Um, that was something that Ken and I talked about, uh, so that we would just keep it, uh, as it was, where the building committee, um, represents us with respect to final design. Of course, we took out bidding and construction phase since that's no longer applicable. Under number one, we took out, um, Phi and, um, obviously inserted the owner's rep and the town's library consultant, which we, um, you know, which we anticipate will be Rick. The, um, third, uh, number three, uh, tasked the committee with making responsible choices mindful of potential impact on taxpayers. And it says that the building committee will recommend choices of materials and finishes that are within the budget of the town and should not in any case have the authority to approve any item not within the budget established by the town or approved by the select board. You may recall that there were previously authorities with respect to 25,000 and 50,000. And now we're keeping the financial implications, uh, or financial decisions with the select board in this draft. Um, in number four, it was just a, um, it was just, um, some typographical changes. Through, T-H-R-U, should be changed, by the way, to through, um, through the proper, the proper spelling of through. Um, and then on number six, Ken and I worked on language and said, "It is the town's goal to minimize owner-requested change orders." So again, that's a guiding principle for the building committee. The makeup of the, of the, um, building committee was proposed to stay the same with respect to, um, its makeup being three community members and two select board members. And then over on the next page, um, again, it leaves to the building committee, um, the task of picking out, um, materials, interior and exterior finishes, et cetera. The building, but then we added, "The building committee will recommend choices of materials and finishes that are within the budget of the town and should not in any case have the authority to approve any item not within the budget established by the town and approved by the select board." Again, keeping finance issues to us. On the change orders, it states that all contract or proposals for change orders will be reviewed by the architects. Sometimes it referred to Stephen Smith and sometimes the architect, so I just refer to the architect. The architect, uh, who, it's, he's mentioned as the architect in the beginning of the document. Um, the architect... The architect will submit a recommendation to the library building committee for review with a copy to the town manager, owner's representative and library consultant. We kept in the town manager, obviously, in here. The next paragraph says, all change orders, and this is where it gets tricky and something that I would think that we would want to discuss, all change orders, these are, all change orders are to be approved by the architect, library building committee, town manager, owner's representative and library consultant, I mean, that's like a lot of cooks in the kitchen, okay? But I kept all those, I just added in library consultant and library building committee, I, I didn't, I, I wanted the board to discuss, you know, who should have the ability to approve this stuff, and so I, I didn't think that was something that the drafter should make a decision on. However, no, I'm not decision, but you know what I'm saying, however, no change orders proposed by the contractor, so these, again, these are contractor proposed change orders. No change orders proposed by the contractors shall be approved if there are or will be financial implications for the town of Rockport. Remember, contractor change orders are supposed to be the responsibility of FII. Owner proposed change orders that lead to an increased cost of a portion of the project may only be approved if it is determined that they will not increase the total cost of the project beyond the budget approved by the select board. The building committee may recommend such change orders consistent with this paragraph to the select board for approval. So the building committee shouldn't even be giving us any suggested owner change orders unless it's within the budget.
Right, and, and the piece of that, that's, that this wording catches is if, if we have a situation where there's been some savings realized in part of the project, that they may then come forward with a change order that may be higher for that particular phase of the project, but the savings have been found elsewhere, it doesn't, it doesn't change the entire budget, and that's, or if there's a counterbalancing change order, like you say, oh, well, we want to have this color paint in this room, it costs $5 more, we're going to have this color paint in this room, it costs $5 less, so the intent there is to, to a little bit of flexibility, but still with the overall budget cap.
And then the last paragraph on the next page says, change orders that have a substantial or significant effect on the aesthetics or quality of the library or the library site shall be approved only by the select board regardless of who requests them. The only thing I would say that in discussing that paragraph that we might want to add is something that has a substantial effect on the durability, I mean, if somebody wants to go from, if the library committee wanted to go from brick to, to wood, you know, I mean, obviously that has a significant effect on the durability of those materials and implications for the town going forward in terms of budgets, so you might want to stick in durability.
I'm okay with lumping that in with quality myself, I think.
I don't think it's the same as quality, personally, but.
I'd be okay either way, actually.
I've got a question on the previous page, third one up, where all change orders approved by the architect. The last part of it says, however, no change orders proposed by the contractor shall be approved if there are or will be financial implications for the town of Rockport. Well, I understand that if they go more, well, what happens if we find something in our favor that will make it less and it is a change order?
Those are, I'm sorry, is that an owner approved or owner proposed or?
Architect.
He's on all change orders.
It says, all change orders are to be approved, et cetera, however, no change orders proposed by the contractor.
Well, the, the one I'm reading has to do with all change orders to be approved by the architect, library building committee, town manager or owner's representative and library consultant, however, no change orders proposed by the contractor shall be approved if there are or will be financial implications for the town of Rockport. I understand about financial implications if there are more.
Okay, so you're saying increase, increase.
If there's something that's in our favor.
Yeah, yeah.
And it is a change order, I mean, I, I don't want, you know.
Should those be two separate paragraphs? It's two separate.
Yeah, maybe so, and, you know, I'm not even sure that this is ready for primetime yet, I just, you know, I, it was just, it was just to get down on paper some of the things that we discussed in the last.
We're 98% close.
Yeah, I think we are, and I think that.
Yeah, so you're saying increases, right, not decreases, obviously, and, and also another thing that, again, on that same paragraph, that's the second paragraph under change orders, all change orders are to be approved by the architect, it says, it already said in there, the architect, okay, and then we, I, we put in the library building committee, the town manager was already there, the owner's rep is there, and now we included the library consultant, so, I mean, I don't know what you want to do with that.
I think that, and the decisions about approving change orders rests with the owner of the project, which is the town.
Yeah.
So I think that that's, in this case, the only, it's the library building committee, and I don't know whether you want to, we have the select board down for, you know, more significant, with, if there's a financial implication, we have a select board to prove them, but I think that the building committee is probably enough, I mean, we've stated in the top that they have to be reviewed by the architects.
Yeah.
And I think we probably ought to have that the, you know, that the owner's rep ought to review them as well, and, you know, they should be reviewed by all these entities, but approval, I think, rests with the owner.
Right, it doesn't fall with, it doesn't fall with.
Yeah.
Me, you know, as the consultant, that, that approval doesn't fall with me, it should go back to somebody else.
Library, and it did have the architect in there, so we'd be taking out the architect from the old charges, but I, I agree.
Yeah, but it's going to be reviewed by the architect, the architect will be able to present to the building committee, and, and for that matter, the owner's rep and the contractor can say, here's the implications if you approve this order, and then the library building committee will vote on it.
In fact, the architect makes the recommendation in the prior one.
Right, yeah.
The architect makes the recommendation to the library building committee with a copy to the town manager, owner's rep and library consultant, so what I'm hearing maybe is that all change orders are to be approved by the, just by the building committee.
Yeah.
Take everybody else out, but say that if it increases, you know, if it increases, then no go.
I'd also just get, I'm putting my lawyer hat on.
Numbers and.
No, I'm putting my lawyer hat on, I'd, I'd lump up references, change orders by contractors in one paragraph.
Yeah.
Change orders by somebody else, because you've got it spread around.
Well, I don't, I took the original one that was in here.
And then, and then lastly, I'd change any words to may or could or should, shall.
Yeah, I think I did for my additions, but yeah, let's see if there's any others.
Do we, in reference to the one about leading to the increased cost of a portion of the project may only be approved, et cetera, do we care whether they're owner proposed or contractor proposed?
Yeah, because if it's owner, owner proposed change orders are on us, contractor proposed change orders are on FII.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, because it's a guaranteed price contract.
Right.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Okay.
So do you have enough info to?
I think so, does everybody, anybody else have anything else?
I'm good with, as presented with the changes we talked about.
Okay, okay, well, I can, I can mess around with this a little bit and get you a new version, and I'll get Denise to mess around with it with me.
They have a comment from, we have a comment from our vast audience.
Denise Munger, I, I just want to, I'm a, I guess I'm a little unclear, if the library building committee is making decisions on change orders and we have, I don't know what, we haven't gotten a meeting schedule going yet, but it's, it could be a little unwieldy if somebody has to know, if, if decisions have to be made out in the field and they're done through the course of a change order or, and I haven't obviously looked at this document to see what our charge is, but, you know, A, I wonder what we really want from the building, library building committee, and then B, if we're sort of acting on the ground for decisions that Charlie needs to know right away, I'm not sure where the organization is doing that.
That's a good point, the owner's rep is there for a reason and we're hiring one, and if you have change orders that could be required on a day-to-day basis, the library building committee, it would be a stretch, to your point.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the way it was written, that way, for, it was written for the building committee to do those change orders, I mean, we didn't make this up, but I think it's a good point.
But even back at their meeting, they had that question of how would we handle it here.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Well, I guess the question then becomes, I mean, I don't know how frequently the library building committee is going to meet, I would imagine that they'll be meeting, you know, when.
I think weekly is what people were thinking.
I think weekly, yeah, and I think that if we've got a change order that comes in and it can't wait a week, then, then we got a bigger issue, I think, so I think it probably is okay.
I think we ought to break it down into change orders by group, you've got change orders by the contractor, you've got change orders that are requested by the library committee, you've got change orders that are requested by the owners.
Not the library committee, the library committee is.
Not the library, no, I'm talking, the owners are the town of Rockport.
Right, exactly.
Okay, and, and to ask or require the library committee to approve.
The building committee.
The building committee, I'm sorry, any, some of these, like a contractor change order, I think it might be more than what that committee bid off.
Yeah, and.
We have a lot, a lot of cooks.
Yeah, there's a lot of cooks in this and, you know.
Just want to make sure we would be providing value, that the committee.
But there is the, there is the piece about all of the things that are just kind of specked out in allowances, that those, those decisions have to get made, there's, you know, allowances.
Yes, and that's the charge of the, that's the charge of that committee, but.
The focus of their work is going to be.
But I think, Denise, you make an excellent point, for, if a material has to be changed from X to Y due to availability, and it goes from something that's this big around to something that's this big around.
Right.
And it's made out of galvanized this instead of aluminum that, is that something we expect to hold up and have the, the building committee approve a week or two weeks down the road? Probably not, and, I mean, that's the little stuff that you say, no, this.
And so, well, yeah, but somebody has to do it, so that's the owner's rep, is that what we're saying?
That's the owner's rep, I would say, you know, that's right.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's not the way the old building charge was written, and I, but I agree with you that that's, that's a lot more durable.
How do we word that?
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
And we'll figure it out and present something to you next time.
Yeah, thank you, Denise, that's a good point.
Okay, table. Anything else on this particular topic?
More feedback than you ever wanted, didn't you?
I think, I think you're right, though, we're 98% there.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think, I think it's, it's going to be a good process.
Next time around, it'll be easy.
It'll be on the consent agenda next time.
There we go. Okay, next item is the possible land transfer to the main water company. We did, we have information in our packet that tells us about the planning board and conservation commission voting in favor of this particular land transfer.
Let me just say, as the planning board liaison member, I was at the, the meeting where this was discussed, and I think all the facts are as presented in our packet. The one question that I had at the meeting that I asked was, does this town have, or does this parcel of land have any monetary value? And, in, in other words, you know, could you sell it to a private landowner? And the consensus seemed to be that, no, it didn't, it's in the deep woods, it doesn't have a view of grassy pond, I couldn't really see a right of way to it, but, you know, that was sort of the only question that I had, are we giving away a piece of land that has some good monetary value to it, but again, the consensus of the planning board and people that were there didn't seem to think it did, so I guess that's good enough for me.
Well, I don't think it's buildable at all.
Yeah.
Because it's too narrow.
It doesn't have a right of way at all.
So, the only, the only value it would have would be to the surrounding property, which is who we're transferring it to, and they're telling us that they're going to put a conservation easement on it, so.
Well, there's another landowner, Miller Eisenline, but.
I don't think they surround it, do they?
Well, they don't surround it, but they abut it.
Yeah. Well, what's the board's pleasure on this item?
I'm willing to make the appropriate motion to, and move to approve the transfer of the tax-acquired property as currently described on map 037, lot 030 on the official tax maps for the town of Rockport, Maine. Such property acquired by the town by virtue of a tax lien certificate recorded in the Knox County Registry of Deeds in book 1736, page 154, to the main water company and to authorize the town manager to execute all documents necessary for such transfer.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? I think this is a good idea, it's going to help with the conservation easement, the trails and all that sort of thing, so I think it's a good thing. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? A five to nothing vote.
It's the budding landowners.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Okay, update on the development of infrastructure bond, as we have in our notes, the CIP committee met last week, I guess, and Jeff, do you have any thoughts, comments there?
Yeah, we can add to it, getting close.
Yep.
We expect to have something in early July for the board to review. We, it's really a matter of how much money do you want to spend on road improvement versus how much do we want to spend on some of this other stuff? And it's, where's the balance going to be and what, what, what does the town want?
I mean, you could, you could, with road reconstruction and, and major facelifting of some of the roads that need it, you could spend a million and a half easily.
Yeah, and this, you know, we sort of heard about the input, you know, the direction this has been going over the last month or two, and my concern is that.
We expressed that.
That it, yeah, well, I should let Mark finish, but he didn't.
We, we expressed the fact that there is a lot of concern from board members that some of the infrastructure we currently have be included in that.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, this is not all about roads.
Yeah, there's nothing sexy about roads.
But it's just, you know, is it a half million, three quarters of a million of other stuff, or?
Well, the, the example that was given in, was the, the potential Walker Park seawall, well, you can't very well fix ours and not fix the neighbors, because what you do to ours might impact theirs more adversely, so.
Or we could fix it, or it would be money wasted because it would erode behind it.
Right.
And so, and then, plus, we don't have a good quote for it yet, because we haven't had the engineering survey done.
Will did go down there on Friday and take a look, I haven't seen, got a report back from him.
Because it's big bucks, it could be anywhere from 200 to 400,000 dollars to do that.
So we did stress, you know, the fact that we need some other things fixed as well, sorry for interrupt, but.
Yeah, so, well, we've expressed those concerns.
Okay.
To make sure that there's a fair and balanced bond package presented to the, to the board, and we may decide as a board that it's too much one way or the other, and we can make those changes quickly.
Okay. I would suggest that the committee would want to present the board with some decisions to make, you know, saying, these are all worthy items, and then have the board decide, okay, we want to spend some money on the seawall, or we want to spend some money on the roads, whatever it might be, and, because there's, it's all work that needs to be done, we can't do it all at once.
We can present you with, this is what that committee recommends, if you want to add more in column X, it would be this item, then this item, then this item, if you wanted to take away from column Y, say, column Y were the roads, this would be the first to go, this is the second to go, this is the third to go.
Yeah, that's good.
That'd be a good process, I think.
So that way, that way you can see what's prioritized in one bucket and what's coming off, what could come off in the other. You could spend a fortune on roads in this town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And no different than any other town, really. And speaking of which, we did make mention, or it was mentioned by me anyway, that we, we're going to have to consider, we're going to have to consider raising our yearly 285 up to at least 400, and that, and that may not even keep up with it.
Yeah.
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 Okay, well, that's just an update, Deborah, did you have, do you want to talk about the harbor walls or whatever?
Oh, yeah, 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 thanks. Yeah, so I had gotten contact from somebody on behalf of the Rockport Boat Club, saying that there are, you know, some problems with the wall over there on the, at the boat club, and of course, that is property that is leased to the boat club, and I, I did check the lease, and the lease requires us to maintain the wall, specifically notes that in the lease, I don't have it here in front of me, but I did check it, and, so, anyway, I don't know if it's really, I guess for years, we've been like filling up some holes with rocks or something, and, and maybe that's all that's necessary, or whatever, maybe that's all that's necessary, but the, the contact, to me, suggested that it was something that, you know, was more involved than that, so I just think that when we do look at the seawall, we need to look at the seawall on both sides of the harbor, that's all.
Okay, well, that committee's doing good work, so I appreciate the time put in there by the committee and the select board liaisons. Okay, update on the contract renewal for EMS services from Northeast Mobile Health. Okay, update on the contract renewal for EMS services from Northeast Mobile Health. Rick?
So, um, you have my comments in there, um, you know, my, I think our best in course of, I mean, the goal, I think, is to get an extension so that we have, uh, service for the next year, um, because our contract runs out at the end of, uh, June, um, to get in a year extension, um, and, uh, you know, the, the recommendation that, uh, that came back from, um, from Northeast, you know, the suggested, uh, contract came back, that they sent back, it was just totally inappropriate, and we can't, we can't move forward that, with that kind of a contract. Butch does, you know, I spoke to Butch, he doesn't understand how town government works, we can't tie the town up to having a meeting on a certain date, and we'll guarantee this and guarantee that without going back to the voters for approval, and, um, Camden's, uh, lawyer felt, feels the same way, and so does our lawyer. So the goal, I think the goal is to try and get to some kind of place where we can get a, um, a, a one-year extension, and I, I think we can get to a one-year extension, um, if we make some minor revisions, like included the extension that they sent us back in, uh, January, uh, for an extension which, uh, includes just two provisions, changing two provisions, uh, you know, one was to keep the, uh, the price the same, and the other one was changing something in the incident command system, uh, but then, you know, for Northeast, it's the, the idea is not knowing what's going to happen, and, uh, you know, I think one of the things when Ken and I talked was, you know, the idea of having a, having a date certain that we will either renew, we will let them know about a renewal, uh, a renewal, whether we're in, we intend to renew with them, like in mid-January. So it gives them enough time, um, and then also consider a, some sort of side agreement or, or a letter from the four boards, the four towns, saying, we intend to meet as a group, uh, the four towns intend to meet, discuss this about what our future is going to be, um, so I think the biggest thing for him is just hanging, not knowing what his, what his, uh, future is going to be here in the four towns.
Yeah, and, uh, I know Rick had told me that they, they wanted to have in the contract, well, we'll have a meeting by, so four towns will have a meeting by such and such a date, and I suggested a simpler way to do that would just be to simply execute a one-year contract with an option for a renewal for one more year, but we have to exercise that option by, pick a date, January fifteenth, or something of that nature, so that, uh, if, if, if the four towns haven't gotten together and, and thought about another direction to go by January fifteenth, they're not going to have it done by the end of the year anyway, um, and so we're going to have to go on to another year. So I, it's, it's going, the four towns are going to have to get together and talk about this and decide what they want to do, and there's a lot of moving parts to it, you know, the, the cost is a big one, um, so I think if we could get them to, to just, uh, put that, put that renewal date in there, uh, that that will give them enough notice so that they will know, and also, like I say, if we don't renew by, if we don't know what we're doing by then, then we probably have to renew anyway.
So I, I have a question, I mean, I, I have my own opinions as to why we got the reply back from then, because there's other stuff floating around that they probably took offense to, or whatever you want to call it. Now, I think I mentioned it to Ken, there are perhaps an opportunity, uh, for us, uh, for Northeast perhaps to use our fuel depot. We have, in the past, a nonprofit, Camden First Aid used it to benefit the towns for their first aid association, and currently you have, uh, another private for-profit organization that's using it for the school system, which benefits our towns, so is there a possibility that we could offer them a better deal for fuel, which would benefit them and benefit us? I don't know what the dollar value of that benefit would be, but it's worth throwing out there.
I mean, I, I don't think that will solve the problem, you know, I think it, you know, it goes much bigger than that.
It's just another carrot to dangle out there, that's all.
It's worth a discussion, although I don't, I don't know whether it, you know, it may, I think it's worth a discussion, but I, I don't know, it, it may also just complicate things, uh, at this point, I'm not sure, I don't know.
All I can say is, now I've said it, you guys run with it or not?
But I think, I mean, the key issue here is that, you know, there are some of the, some of the towns that really want to get this extension done, and some of the towns that are, have some reservations about it.
Well, Camden's, Camden's already given their town manager the, the authorization to sign this extension.
To sign the, the extension that was originally?
As originally presented, we, we had a meeting today, and, and, um, Audra said she thinks that her board would also authorize an extension with the provision of a renewal date in it, that we give them a, a date, that we'll let them know if we plan on renewing or not. I mean, that, that's kind of the, kind of the way to, to force the issue of, what are we going to do? Are we going to have a conversation and have it, you know, have, have the four towns get together, because we're going to have to, or you're going to have to decide what the future is that you want, and the goals and objectives for the four towns. What Butch's issue is, he doesn't know how to plan for his future.
I'm going to make a motion. I'll move to authorize the town manager to sign the extension of service agreement with Northeast Mobile Health Services for a term of one year commencing on July first, two thousand nineteen, and expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, as presented or amended.
Well, you got to, is.
It's either as presented or amended, you can't put both in there.
The amendment, you'd want to add in some amend, the language.
Here's some amendments that, uh, I believe you had asked for.
Right, the, uh, renewal language.
The January fifteenth.
January fifteenth.
Second. So what's the motion as it stands right now?
Uh, I move to authorize the town manager to sign the extension of service agreement with Northeast Mobile Health Services for a term of one year commencing on July first, two thousand nineteen, and expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Within expiration of what?
With, with a, uh, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Renewal.
Uh, renewal deadline.
With a January fifteenth, two thousand twenty renewal deadline, period.
Okay.
And there again, I'll second that one.
Yep. Did you say you seconded, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, discussion on that motion?
So does a renewal deadline mean that you have to renew it in January, or does it have to be that it's a notification?
It, not, it.
It should be notification of renewal, so I don't like the way the motion is.
All right, let me amend my motion to include notification of renewal on, on January fifteenth of two thousand twenty.
Notification of renewal or non-renewal?
Yeah.
Either way.
You could decide, you know.
If, if it pass, if the date passes and there's no notification, then it's a non-renewal.
Well, if, if they don't hear from us, one way or the other, I, I would assume that it would go in, if, we would have to tell them on the fifteenth that we didn't want to, and by them not hearing from us on the fifteenth, would that be an automatic?
No, I think it'd be the, I think the intent would be, it'd be the other way around, we'd have to proactively, at least my thought on how, I don't know whether the wording of the motion carries us or not, but my thought would be that what they would be looking for, and I think what, what we would force ourselves to do is to proactively say, by January fifteenth, yes, we're going to renew for another year, or no, we're not.
Let me amend, let me amend my motion and clarify that particular point. I'll reread the whole thing again with that part. Move to authorize the town manager to sign the extension of service agreement with Northeast Mobile Health Services for a term of one year commencing on July first, two thousand nineteen, expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, with a notification of intent to renew or not renew, given by January fifteenth of two thousand twenty.
Perfect.
Okay, that's seconded, okay. Discussion on that motion? I think that carries our intent, um, the only thing we haven't included in there is, is renewal for how long, but I think that's okay, renewal is renewal, um, and that, it may be at that point that we decide, well, we're going to renew for one more year, because we're not done yet, or it may be we decide, we've looked at the other options and we think this is pretty good, we want to renew for three years or whatever it might be, so I think that, uh, that works well, and that, and we've, I think we've given Rick enough latitude too, to, to sign the contract under those parameters with, with some other.
We have to get the other.
The other issues.
Other towns to do the same, but I think Camden, uh, Audra seemed to think that Camden would be willing that language addition.
But the reality is, we need EMS services in six weeks.
Yes, we do.
And this is the only way we're going to get them.
It's a fact.
And, and Rick, do you know offhand what the termination provisions are for, um, for them, uh, you know, mid-year for, for?
I think there's a six-month, six-month termination clause.
I think that sounds familiar, okay.
I think it's a state requirement or something.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that, that sounds familiar.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's a five to nothing vote. Okay, next on the agenda is update on the progress of selecting a new owner's representative for the Rockport Public Library project. Rick and Deborah and Doug were involved in this process.
I'm just writing myself a note so I don't forget. Here ahead of me. The, uh, we, we interviewed, uh, two potential candidates, and then, um, uh, made basically everybody that was part of the interview process, it was Deborah, Doug, myself, Steve, and Will Gartley, and every, everybody that was there recommended, uh, Mary Beth, who we, we were considering previously, um, that was being considered for the previous owner's rep, uh, when we went through the process with, uh, and Phi was selected.
Rick, could you please state her full name and her affiliation?
Van Kirin, Mary Beth Van Kirin, she's an owner's rep, clerk of the works, uh, she's the owner's rep, uh, for the middle school project.
In the company, she?
She's an independent.
Independent, okay, thank you.
She's a structural engineer by trade. And so, uh, she sent along, and I provided, just provided you, uh, I met with her, uh, this past week, and, and basically outlined what we were looking for the owner's rep to do, and she, with the idea that we were trying to keep the budget and the amount of hours down to seven to ten hours a week, um, she is now doing the middle school at about fifteen hours a week, which is a much larger project, um, and thought that, you know, seven to ten hours, there, there'll be weeks that it's more and weeks that it's less, but the average would be about seven to ten hours a week, um, and so that's the, the document that I just left you, uh, that this is what her scope of services, what she thought she could do in that timeframe, uh, and then she also provided a, a sample contract of what she has used in the past, uh, that has, that, uh, it's a basically boilerplate draft contract for what she has used in the past. But we've already been working on the contractors.
Yeah, as, as you know, we've been, um, we've taken the Phi contract that we had with, as owner's rep, um, when they were the owner's rep, which I guess had been prepared by our outside counsel, and we have been, you know, tweaking that to reflect the owner's rep responsibilities versus those that would be Rick's responsibilities as the library consultant, and, um, and because our outside counsel has already reviewed that, and we've paid, I mean, drafted it, and we've paid for that drafting, of course, they had to review what we tweaked now, and what the board, you know, but the original contract was drafted by our outside counsel, and we paid for that, I think that we should stick with that format and the tweaking that we were already on, you know, on process of doing, so I think that, again, the detail of that needs to be discussed in an executive session, um, but I think that Rick having gotten, you know, this from Mary Beth is helpful, and, um, assuming that that's who we go with, and the scope of services is helpful, but I think it should be further discussed in terms of the terms in executive session.
Seems to me the two documents are probably going to be able to be merged, not too much to.
You know, I think the, the value is if, if there was anything, if there's any, I think, as you said earlier, Deborah.
Yeah, yes.
The scope of services can be an attachment, and you, we can work on that as well.
Right.
And, and, um, and it just, if there's anything that we, that our contract and this contract, if we're missing anything that we, that you see in this, the, her sample, that you want to include, that's the time to.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, so I think we can discuss those things in executive session.
Yeah.
But I think that what, um, tell me if I'm wrong here, I think that what we, what would be appropriate would be for us to, if, if you guys agree, to, um, appoint her, um, as, you know, choose her as our owner's rep, um, subject to, um, our nego, you know, subject to our coming up with the contract, an acceptable contract with her.
Well, the suggested motion basically does that, I think.
Yeah, but it's authorizing Rick to negotiate a draft contract for board approval, and what I'm saying is, I think that the, we've, we are, are, we, the select board, are already down a path that we need to finish in executive session, and I don't like the way it's worded in terms of authorizing him to negotiate a draft, because we have already started down the path of that draft. What we have to keep in mind is, Rick, no offense to Rick, Rick is intricately involved in this, you know, part of this has to do with his contract, and part of it has to do with Mary Beth's contract track, this is not a pure conflict of interest situation where he's got like some financial interests, but we, he is part of the, this.
You're trying to merge the two of them together.
Yes, exactly, we're trying to make those two merge together and be consistent with our construction documents, which of course, this one doesn't do, and so we need to, um, I, I would recommend that we go down the path that we're on, and when we get to an appropriate place, hopefully in executive session with respect to that, then we, we, we send it off to our outside counsel to tweak, and then, and then we can go forward with Mary Beth.
Well, we can either craft a motion now to appoint her, or if you want to, we can go into executive session, have the discussion, and then come out and, and have a motion at that time, if you, if the board thinks that we'd have a better sense of what the motion should be at that point.
Well, my recommendation would be that we appoint her subject to, um, the negotiate, or subject to the drafting of an acceptable contract, and I would just do that, and take out kind of the, the, okay.
Can you make a motion?
Okay, so I move, um, to accept the recommendation, uh, uh, of the town manager, of Mary Beth Van Kirin, as the owner's representative, subject to, um, an appropriate, or an, an acceptable contract, uh, being, uh, drafted.
Second.
Okay, so we moved in second, Lynn, did you have the motion? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay. That finishes our unfinished business. Liaison reports, any?
Start down at this end, uh, Planning Board, uh, there were various, uh, small businesses, uh, granted and, uh, whatnot, but also the discussion about that parcel of land that we just, uh, approved for transfer, uh, let's see, keep Rockport beautiful, um, or Rockport Beautification met this evening while we were meeting, but, uh, earlier in the week, I had met with Mike in the Department of Transportation to look at the, uh, corner of the RES lot there at Route ninety and Route one, to see what we could do to improve the attractiveness of that intersection to people that are arriving either back into town or passing through, and actually, the DOT was quite conciliatory, we can pretty much, uh, do the landscaping that we had talked about as long, again, as we keep the plants that are in lines of sight quite low, and don't block access to any of the equipment that they need to have, so that was all, uh, quite encouraging, and I think the real issue is going to be, you know, how can we pay for that landscaping, which is around twelve thousand dollars, so, um, between the Rockport Beautification and the Garden Club, we're looking at ways of raising money, and we'll probably start possibly a. raising money. And we'll probably start possibly a GoFundMe page. We'll see if there's other ways to raise the money. It's about twelve thousand bucks. Uh, investment committee, uh, this past week, Diane, myself, and Kevin Olenek, who's a physician here in town, uh, sat down to talk about the Weidman Trust and how best to allocate that money. Uh, it was a good discussion, and we sort of agreed that perhaps the path we might want to start down is looking at, uh, working with the Knox Free Clinic, because they serve quite a few, uh, citizens of Rockport. So Diane was going to get in touch with, uh, Ms. Badley, who is the executive director of the Knox Clinic, try to get a sense of how the Weidman Fund might help the Knox Free Clinic with, um, re, uh, residents from Rockport who use their services. So, uh, hopefully we'll have a, a recommendation to the investment committee in the next couple of months, and then that recommendation will come here for approval. Let's see. Library committee met, and again, they're continuing to struggle with the auditors, uh, feeling that, uh, the select board should have the ultimate authority over the, um, library trust fund. Um, but again, I think until the select board gets involved directly with them and the town manager, probably not going to go very far very fast. So, that's it.
So, um, on Midcoast Solid Waste, um, we have been interviewing for new facility managers and, um, conducted some Skype interviews with the full board, uh, and town managers. And, um, there are two candidates that, um, we are focusing on. And, um, we're inviting those candidates to tour the facility, walk the facility with the select board members, uh, or not select board members, I mean, the board of directors, members, um, that can be, that can make it. Um, we have been working on the governance committee on trying to pin down exactly what kind of entity, um, or confirm what kind of entity Midcoast Solid Waste is. And we have made great strides in that and, um, uh, have, uh, have a legal opinion from, uh, outside council that was recommended to us, um, specifically with respect to how we can invest the funds of Midcoast Solid Waste, which basically is limited to municipal investments, um, same as the towns. Um, but anyway, there'll be more on that.
Harbor committee had a long meeting last week. I was not at it, so I don't have the details as to what was shared. Rec committee, membership, we talked about earlier today. That was the big issue from the last meeting, was making sure we had proper membership and, uh, and coverage there. No update on the pathways committee since last meeting. The capital improvement committee, we talked about, which is primarily around prioritization of roads by condition, expense, and traffic. That's what I've got.
Doug touched on the conservation committee that I was unable to attend with the land swap, not swap, but deeding over to main water. Um, capital improvement, we talked on, uh, talked on earlier and just now, so. And for me, Legacy Rockport met this past week, focusing on the, uh, on the bridge dinner and also getting their database up to snuff. Um, had a presentation from the Simonton Corner Hall folks there who are trying to rehabilitate that facility and have been working hard at that. They've got a lot of work to do there, and they are going to be, uh, a big presence at the bridge dinner, both in terms of fundraising, but also in terms of, uh, of labor to help with the bridge dinner. So a lot of the, one of the guiding principles behind the bridge dinner is that the groups that are benefiting from it, we hope to have a lot of help from them in, in the, the work of setting it up and helping it happen and things like that. So, uh, and I think that's it for me. No ordinance review. Cemetery committee has not met. Um, ambulance review has not met. And, uh, ZBA has not met. So that's it. Um, we have a couple of executive sessions this evening. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to.
Well, I would ask a question because we have to muddle the first one. We can't do the motion to say A and B.
Correct. After you have the column.
I move, we enter into executive session for the discussion of contracts connected with the use of real property, rural personal property pursuant to one MRSA Section four oh five six C.
Second.
Motion second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Five to nothing.